What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching session and today we are trying to explore the checking range. As the three better in a three bet pot, so you're the aggressor. You know, you're supposed to bet kind of Austin as the aggressor, but you're supposed to check a lot. And let's explore that checking range and how to play post up when we check. So. We checked her. How often do we think this hand checks first of all on this type of flow? I think it checks like. Because like the other ace, they can bet for value kind of, but this one's like one of the weakest ones.
Yeah, what?
I'm not checking enough, I for sure.
I think um.
See seventy-five percent checking on this flop.
I think everything in the ranges mix at some frequency.
Yeah. Okay, so seventy-five percent chicken from here. Now if I said that, I'm not calling, are we calling?
Yeah, you're definitely getting the price to call.
You sure about that Pete? We don't have any back doors, we just have over cards, you call our three bets, so he also has over cards.
What other hands or strengths are we checking? Like maybe pocket sevens, pocket fives. Aces at some frequency.
We're, we're checking a bunch of our value to check raise it because we can check raise his medium pairs with our top pairs here. Um, and yeah, we're just gonna have a bunch of checks in our range.
I don't know, you guys think we call? I would always fold here.
Definitely calling one street.
Okay, so fifty fifty it seemed to be. Uh, action, action, okay.
Probably check raising at some point too.
No, colorful. Okay, so when we call, we check this, right? Still the same sense, or do we do something with the diamonds?
Nope, doesn't change anything, we have base high.
Out to fold.
What's a give up?
Yeah, easy fold.
Away we go.
Okay. Uh, here, the board.
These three bet pots.
Did you hit replay hand?
No. We're gonna see the next one.
Clearly three bet.
Yeah, we didn't have a diamond on the last one, we had the ten of diamonds, so this is a new hand, but this is the same hand that, so. It's gonna uh, probably call again.
This is an easier call.
Or fold again, cuz I was first time I'm folding.
It's gonna call more than the last one.
I'm folding. Oh my goodness, okay.
Yeah, gonna call more cuz you got the six, seven, so you can make it straight to the ten, the other board you really could get, it was like five, six, I think.
Okay, they operate.
You also have the ace of diamonds, so on the diamond run out, you can bluff.
This is a call.
Uh, do we go raise?
Hmm, I don't think we raised the under pairs to the ten.
Hmm, I'm with that.
I think fours to nines just flat here.
Do we have a big raising strategy right off the bat? I mean.
Pair board.
Pair board left, it's a three bet pot.
I know, but still. Don't matter that much.
Five percent.
Why, there's seventeen, at least seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two percent raises.
Okay.
Seven's raising.
And like sevens, was it raising? Didn't look.
Yeah, like a sliver.
A sliver with spades or no?
Uh, it's supposed to cool with it.
Fade and diamond, it looks like it likes the most.
This is just a call. Sixteen percent raises hmm. Check?
Might, doc small maybe?
Check.
I'm hitting all the slivers. Nah, it's probably, I guess taking this line.
Alright.
I'd fold.
Yeah, against the polarized bet, I would fold here too.
Nah. I mean, this is.
With the paired board, you can't fold this.
Yeah, it hasn't changed much yet, still call.
That's pretty thin.
We're going broke.
Check. Do you ever think about blocking something like that?
I'm definitely folding now.
Oh wow.
Well, if we have to call sometimes while we block the flush, so that's.
I mean, I don't think our book is relevant though.
I mean, I think we're beat here every time, this is what these are the faults I have to find.
Like what sevens does he have in a free, or seven spades does he have in a free bet plot of like ten, seven suited, and like seven, eight?
Eight, seven, okay, seven.
I just don't think it's that many.
We block a world of sevens here.
I would call.
I would.
This is an insane call, like if you're doing this in game, you're, you're just lighting money on fire, I think.
Oh, come on, look at him, look at him.
In theory, hey, I'm with you, man, I think it's a great theory call.
You are out there bluffing this pot with the king of spade in your hand.
I am, you're right.
Oh. Sometimes you might need to find calls, is it a great call against Bob? I don't know, against you, not folding.
Fair enough, I mean.
So check this out, this is a three bet pot. Why don't we check the flop? How offensive is that?
Seems like a really good check, man, that's a nasty board for your hand. In range in general.
Often do you think you check the flop?
But I'm just gonna have like two pairs, sets, straights.
Man, I, I wouldn't be surprised to see. Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised to see like half your range checking or something crazy like that.
Okay, so this combo wants to check out from the time. So we call? Or we, or is it a race?
No, easy call.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, dude, you're just, you're isolating yourself against value if you start raising this kind of stuff.
We keep the same stance, check call, check call.
You might check, yeah, big enough.
I'm playing check.
Okay.
And then uh, you might be able to start raising, I mean, that's a, yeah, okay, so maybe you block here, or do you just go big?
I think I bet.
Why are we blocking?
To induce bluffs.
Sometimes you block the nuts.
I would bet, I would bet twenty-nine here to try and get him to bluff catch me, cuz that's the size my single spades would wanna bet.
Think that's pretty good. Twenty, I even twenty, I actually like twenty.
I don't mind the size, I just definitely wanna bet, not check. Yeah, that's what I said.
It's a block.
Yeah, it's going small, like.
Like we obviously won't fold into a raise though, right? Like, definitely.
Alright, so.
Raise.
And you're gonna three bet this to check raise?
Yep.
No spade?
I don't know, I don't know about raising this one, I would wanna spade, I think. It's probably okay, it's probably okay with the heart at some frequency, I don't, I don't think it's bad.
I like the call though.
Peel one, right?
I'm, I'm gonna call.
Like suppose you go gosh, sure.
Really?
You gotta call, man.
Easy call.
Two wonders in a gut shot.
What, what did you wanna do Louis, were you thinking about folding?
It's a new world for me. I'm exploring.
Okay.
Yeah, he doesn't, he doesn't check much after he three bets.
I check fold now.
Yeah, it's. You could be drawing dead, it's just to get out of, get out of there.
Okay. Oh, how did we check here?
This is our worst, this is our worst queen.
Yeah, that's it.
Worst queen, no spade, that's why we.
Yeah.
Yeah, often, give me a frequency.
Uh, eighty-four percent.
Half, I would think.
Fifteen percent. Thirty, I'm close. Wow, everyone's close, right? But it's not checking much.
What about Quinn check?
Okay, but here we are, we did it. Is this a check raise? I think so, right?
No, man, you're gonna isolate yourself against value again, I think you just call.
Are you trying to put in a hundred big blinds with top pair?
Tell you what, guys, you guys got a raising range here, right?
We do.
Yes, you, you do have a raising.
Has to have some queens like this, right?
No, you don't wanna have a ten though.
Some slivers, no?
You don't have a spade, which is nice.
Louis, you're gonna be checking some sets and two pairs too.
Okay, I'm raising, I'm with you. You're gonna be dumpstering yourself and start raising these combos.
Just a little bit, sometimes.
And to be honest, if we're, if this was like forty percent.
Give me a twenty percent.
Okay, fine, I'll, I'll split the difference. I'll split the difference, give you fifteen percent.
Okay, okay. Seven, eight.
Alright, alright.
It's raising eight out of a hundred times.
That's a, hey, that's actually, that's a great way of putting it, put some actual numbers to it.
Wrong words for me.
Yeah, still checking here. I, I think, yeah, I think we still do the same.
Yeah, easy check.
Uh, can just call down.
Oh.
Well. I could.
This is, this is a easy call, I don't know what you guys wanna do other than call here.
Yeah, easy call.
No, never stuffing this.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so here, just to, just to, just to play devil's advocate, you stuff it, what happens? You get called by ace queen, or you fold out his flush draws.
You're the only, the only one who's talking about that.
No, I'm not, somebody else was uh, in the chat talking about uh, raising it, it seems.
Yeah, somebody said something about stopping it.
Those may as well.
That didn't, as I say, that didn't come from me.
Uh. Um, now. Do we ever lead this check? I think it becomes an easy check. Or a block bet, the three bet pot.
Uh, this is gonna be a check. Check call or check fold sometimes depending on what he does.
Yeah.
Easy check and hard call.
You shouldn't have many aces, that's what I'm thinking, like what aces could he have?
The ace is kind of a good guard for our range.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, like he doesn't double barrel when he ace seven and ace queen.
The flush completing is very bad.
So he's gonna have ace of hearts, he's gonna have hearts here sometimes, like he's gonna have ace, ten of hearts here.
Flush completing is just too bad, yeah.
I think there's gonna be a percentage rate point five.
But uh, that being, that being said, I don't think he's gonna be stuffing all this. His stuff, yeah, okay.
Yeah, flush completing there isn't that bad for us because it's the ace, and that detracts from a lot of his combos that are there in a three bet pot. So.
Yeah, so uh, when do you guys check this flop?
Um, if I three bet, honestly, I'm, I'm c-betting this flop a hundred percent of the time.
I'm not, I'm not checking this flop.
Just because uh, we have all the better pairs, right?
Oh, look at this. Okay, okay. So I did whatever, right? So.
What, oh, I was, I was interested in learning what our strategy was there.
I had three percent of the time, Joey.
No, that was with the hand. That, that, it's not three percent with the range.
Oh no, for sure.
Yeah, the range is bet medium.
I could, yeah, I could tell you Joey, like uh, it's gonna be a heavy, heavy bet spot.
Yeah, if that hand's only checking four percent, the range is better.
I would pretty much, I would arrange bet that board.
I would bet small.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yes, range.
Yep.
We're good. No taking. Okay, now here we check. Because we don't have a spade, right? We don't have a heart, don't have a spade. How often do we check this board?
Uh, with a combo like this?
With that combo?
I'm never checking with the ten in my hand.
Forty percent.
I'm checking here, I'm checking here a lot in game, just because this is like, I don't know. If he's finding like the wide defense, he's gonna have a gut shot, a pair, or a flush draw or something here. So it's like, I'm in pot management mode.
Yeah.
I'll just check fold here.
Well.
Yeah, check fold.
So you guys wanna fold?
Hmm.
Probably, if, if, yeah, if we face some smoke, I'm folding, yeah, I mean, like, what, what are we defending?
We continue to defend here for. Parents, no, on rainbow bars only, here we need a spade.
I think you do.
Cat turned better than a gut shot and don't have a spade, so.
How often do we check that flop with this hand?
Ninety-eight percent.
Range, right?
Always.
You could basically say always.
The raise, I'd raise here.
I probably would have seen him.
Actually, I'm not sure.
How often is this a check?
First guess.
If he's checking this combo, he's checking to raise, right?
I'm gonna say, I don't know, thirty, thirty percent or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just had kings.
Gonna have a lot of checks. Fifty.
Fifty percent with this hand.
You just got the board, you got, I mean, you, you're pretty locked up here, like uh, in your D.
It's a good trap.
Actually, I'm, I'm, I'm really not sure if we raise or call here, I'm not sure.
We're checking this to check raise, right?
I, you know, so I play check raise here in game a lot, I don't know if it's correct though.
You check raise.
Both work, right? I think it's gonna be another mix.
Well, so, okay, like here, here's the question, if you raise, what kind of range, what is he continuing with that we're getting value from here? Like, what is he gonna play a two hundred big blind pot with?
And also.
That we crush.
Also, yeah, we're a hundred big blinds and.
Ace of spades, eggs.
Does this hand need much protection?
Okay, so.
We're happy if the spade comes off.
Yes.
But we can get called by a lot worse too.
Raising is raise.
Any pair with a spade.
See, all right, this is one I was questioning the other day, this is a double check mark for calling, but raising seventeen is the higher frequency. Action. I'm not understanding why the double check marks on the lower frequency.
Alright, hey, uh, do this, do this. Contact, co- contact GTA wizard, go to their Discord and ask the question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, take a screenshot of this, Joey.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, take a screenshot and submit them a question, and I promise they'll, they'll answer that for you guys.
Good, I'll, I'll get the screenshot, I got it.
And make sure to send it, send it to Joey's DM, so he's got the information and he can figure it out. While, while you're at it, send it to Scotty too.
Um.
Put it in the chat for you guys. Anyone can get it. Self-service. Here we go. Alright. I had never advised.
Wait, is it cuz it's higher EV? Call with higher EV, right?
Randomizer.
No, I'm saying, that's why, that might be why it had the double check.
Would you like, would you like the screenshot too, and you can consider it over?
I don't care.
Man, they're trying to get us, we won't fall. Uncheck.
We shot city.
So, we just call here. Okay, cuz I'm losing my mind and I'm checking this board and I'm not check raising. Oh, here we are, the ace, now we, now I think this kills the action, no? Cuz there's no more magic about this, like we are gonna win.
Just, just play check, man, like I think you gotta try to collect from his bluffs at this point.
Yeah, we lost the magic with the acer.
Like, if he's got a set, I, I mean. That's the only thing that's not like the, the queen of spades that's continuing. Okay, so now. The story's changed a little bit, right?
Now we can go like twelve or twenty.
I don't think you can go too greedy, I think twenty is towards the maximum of what you're gonna get paid here ever.
Let's see. Pretty weird, but you're.
All in.
I was just gonna say, I'll be in, in games going all in.
Always. Every time.
Axe game.
Little bad call, is he, he calls the button?
Bluff shove.
I guess he can start, um, I guess he can start. You know, you know what you're gonna bluff shove here, you're gonna bluff shove like. Uh, well, you don't really have, I mean, if you have eight, six, eight, six would be a good bluff, like anything that's blocking the full houses, maybe like some of your random uh, pairs of eights.
He'll be purely jamming value here.
I don't do that, no, you're right, I don't do that, and I think it's suicide, but the solver does it.
Yeah, I'm not.
Does it? Eight, six? No, it doesn't.
It's, it's, it's a three bet pot, you don't really have it, right?
What do you do?
All in, let's move on.
One of the big ones, Steve.
Yeah, always push for more value there.
I posted that in the. GTA wizard Discord.
Wonderful.
We're gonna get to the end of this, thank you.
I'm uh. I'm, I'm. Fuddled to the brim with anticipation.
I think we actually have to call one.
Do we have to call one?
Easy call.
Easy call, Peter.
Easy call.
How easy is it?
Um, I think you did call Louis.
Okay. Okay.
Now, now you're on the hook for another twenty big blinds, at least.
Hmm. What do you mean, we just. We're the three better, this is a great card, are we not gonna start to play?
Now you just play check, man.
We have a marginal, we have a marginal made hand, check.
We have top pair, top kicker in a three bet pot, the SPR is three, this is happy days.
Take it easy, crazy.
This is happy days, I wanna get my chips in, there's no.
Flushing down, the straight just completed, hold on to your horses.
This is not, this is not a spot where you're just gonna randomly talk.
Yeah, yeah, the board doesn't change enough for us to go.
A piece of toast and two eggs.
The, the equity here is highly contested.
Yeah, just check.
Okay, I'll start making it.
Thank you.
So. Checking, jeez, guys, I can't believe my eyes.
I think that king is good for both ranges, not just.
Why, why on earth would you ever wanna dunk this situation?
Because, I mean, I, I pay for a tournament, I get ace, king. Okay, I get this flop, I saw a miracle, I don't see that, alright, and. Aaron Jesus says, okay, here's your reward card. The king. Okay, we got ace, king, look at the king, no?
Come on, you, you, you know the principles behind donking, you, you know the principles behind donking, and it's not, hey, I just turned top pair, let me donk the flop.
We're not gonna donk, it's not. Are we, were we not the aggressor at some point? It's not.
No.
You dropped the ball.
Your brain is broken, you check, you check called.
I know, we dropped the ball, okay, the balls on the ground, but can we not pick it up again, is, is that forbidden?
Not, not, not in this scenario, man.
Is that forbidden, really?
How many king X do we have when we call, check call?
It's Jack ten not leaving.
You got, you got a lot of king X still. You got, you got king ten, you got ace, king, you got, you got king nine, you got.
What king ten check slot though, you're never checking king ten.
Maybe you are on a monotone board.
There you are, on a monotone board, you're probably checking thirty or forty percent of range.
You should be, if you're not.
Oh, so leaving without the flush is like a forbidden sin here, or the blocker to the flush.
Uh huh.
Uh, or the nines.
Oh, I see what you did.
This is, like, this is cool, raise.
Yeah, alright, okay, so we don't really leave turn without the flush.
Yeah, the, the driving factor in this hand is the flush.
Yeah, so we, everything we do is based on, and very interesting.
Well, you, you know where these leads come from, right? It's like when there's equity shifting, like the equity shifts and there's momentum building in a different direction. That they, the king doesn't do that, like you can look at the equity graphs for each of the ranges, and they're still gonna be like on top of each other.
Yeah, all flushes or flush blocker.
Oh no, the top pair changed from the queen to the king, that's not really a factor on the flush board.
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly, Peter, it doesn't matter, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just call.
Alright.
See, now, this is a situation, this is a situation, you could, you could block maybe.
Could you? No way.
Yeah, I mean, what's he gonna raise, other than the nuts?
Right, good point.
This is a four liner to the straight four liner to the flush, there's no way you block her.
Yeah, this is, this is just a check fold a lot.
Yeah.
I don't know about check folding.
What do you? About check folding? I wonder if like on a low spade, that has any merit though.
Oh my. The first game.
It's ace, king, throw it in the box.
You're making Peter lose his mind.
Throw it in the box.
It's funny.
God, I love it.
Oh, we're not gonna raise.
Uh, I think.
I was serious about this, like we came in all the way, we checked this board, now we're not gonna raise.
Alright, here, Louis, I'll, I'll pose you the question again. When you raise, what is he continuing with that we're just ahead of?
Sets? The nuts, yeah, well.
Set, I will single.
Single space, like, like ace ten, like ace ten.
So this one, I can't get behind check raising because the board's gonna get worse for us a lot.
I think I understand, we don't wanna, this is a bit like a cash game, you don't wanna toast like a five hundred bucks or, or nothing. I'll just call in the cash game.
Strategy seems so far either, we just check all everything.
I mean, you just gotta remind yourself, two hundred big blinds is a lot of big blinds.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
Mono boards are weird.
So. Check again, it's getting icy, we're not gonna fold though, right?
No, easy call.
Yeah. Check or block? Check?
Still check. I think check, I think.
Still check.
Check.
Yeah, the three, the, the three doesn't shift any equity, so you would just check.
Happy days. Would we fold if they shot there? It's like we thought.
Uh, that's a, that's a good question.
Cause we kind of, I, 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 yeah, I feel like you will, like, what are you beating, like?
You don't fold here, Jack ten.
Well. I mean, we used to boats, we lose to flushes.
You, no, I don't think we get to fold. Wanna see it?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, you can look at it, man, I, I'm definitely, if somebody jams into me there, I'm folding.
So I can jam into you there, and I'm gonna call with the straight?
You just have to have uh.
If you're gonna call me with a nine here, I don't know what you're talking about.
See, some days you're like. Some days Louis is like, you're such a nit, and then other days he's like, you're such a station. And other days he's like, you're out there bluffing this.
No, you're never bluffing is what I'm saying. You always have the nuts.
I'm bluffable there.
What was it doing? Did it call?
Here, call, you can see. This is a call. Now we check and then we land.
Oh.
And now we bet twelve.
Did it check, check on the turn?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you go big here, I think. Like, I don't know, twenty or something.
We bomb it, absolutely bomb it. We have some worse aces, right?
He should have some worse aces, right?
He's gonna have made two pair here sometimes. Some aces up as well, yeah.
Well, that's the tough breaks.
Yeah, that is a tough break if he has worse ace, jack makes two pair.
Cause if he, he's gonna raise a two pair and we're gonna call, so let's.
He shouldn't have a lot of ace, jack, cuz he didn't bet the turn.
On the turn, no.
He will have some like ace eight here though, and he will have some ace five, maybe ace four.
We're not folding, we're not betting twenty-nine and folding, right?
I would.
Twenty and fold now.
I'm never folding, I'm bombing it.
I'm betting twenty here, is what I do in game.
Yeah, I like.
Yeah, I was thinking between.
And then if he jams, what's the response?
I think he just gotta call unfortunately with this hand. But, but I don't know, man, it doesn't feel good.
One was the highest D V.
I would fold against most opponents, but.
And you probably should fold, I mean, you should fold in game versus most opponents, cause they're just not finding bluffs there.
Yeah, you could make a zero E V call if you want it.
Yeah, that, that's, that's it, if you, if you feel inclined, click the button.
I mean, I mean.
Against the maniacs.
Against populations fold.
Against a very aggressive opponent, he might have some merit calling. Against gallon, don't even think about it.
I like a raid, I honestly, I, I do raise here, there's just so much.
Here, how often do you check the flop?
Uh, I don't.
Check this a lot.
Ten percent?
I don't enough.
I'd more like to check aces than kings.
Thirty percent?
I check here a good bit usually to try to, you know. More.
Try to check raise?
I'd probably check with aces and.
You check here, it's to check raise, I think, right?
Definitely check raising here, and I'm check raising, uh, I'm check raising big too.
Lucho Grande?
I like twenty, I like twenty-four.
Twenty-four is good, yeah. Don't, don't shake the fish off the line.
What kind of fish are you talking about, Pete?
Uh, Peter is right, don't choke the fish on the line.
Yeah. There you go, good boys.
Alright, well, go ahead, play your check game.
Yeah, in game, I've started. There you go, he's polarized.
I'm clicking.
The, with the two flush draws here with the, this hand, there's no way we can just. At the same time, he could have Jack ten, and we could regret it, so just call.
Yeah, just calling.
For like, I don't know, one hundred K or whatever, I'm just calling her.
You, you're never folding this hand, and you're only gonna scare out his buffs.
It's never calling, it's going red.
It's calling.
Pete, are you colorblind? It's ten percent of the time, raise.
Okay.
So we wait till the turn to raise, huh?
You want that big juicy polar bet is what was going on, yeah.
That's right, that makes sense. But when turn goes check, check, then play a small pot.
You go super polar on the river, depending on what the runout is.
I think everyone knows what we're doing.
Yeah, like two X pot type stuff.
I thought ace ace king was almost a range bet board.
This looks like a, a fold.
I mean, if it's almost, then this is probably the combo.
No, that's the hand, not the range, Louis.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but still, if this one checks fifty percent, the range has to be checking more than. It's a pair of board with ace ace king, definitely we should be betting a lot, right?
Yeah, I thought the paired aces should be better.
I would think so.
Okay, we do find some checker.
Yeah, we have a lot of smaller aces that are, that are okay here. Checks.
I mean. I don't know, I fold here.
You probably gotta call one.
You, you, you're probably right, Pete, but, uh, I don't know, man, I just, I let this go in game.
How often do you check this board?
Uh, I don't really, I don't.
Yeah, I'm thinking boards, you don't really check very much.
I'm betting small there, I'm range betting small.
I think if you're folding this on a paired board, you're probably over folding.
I'm gonna put him to the test, there we go.
Savage.
Got him.
Take it, take it.
Oh, one time?
It probably is a call, I'm over folding. I know I am, I'm, I'm over folding, I know it.
Why people do you wanna call?
You have two overs and.
It's like the ace king on that other board, right?
Yeah, but the ace king, you have a nice or a king.
You don't get to fold two overs at this price.
Do you not? Peter, Jesus.
This one has the extra property of being able to back to bluff the backdoor hearts, like, this one's a snap call.
Okay, okay, I see what you're going with that, Peter, that's savage, I'm with you.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, man, like, in game, I'm, I'm folding that, and I, I know I'm over folding a little bit.
Look at this, Peter's a wizard.
That's probably fine, I don't know.
What do you do now, Pete the Wizard, do you check the turn?
Easy check, moderate made, marginal made half.
How are you marginally made here?
Marginally made.
There you go, you asked. Oh, easy.
Three point five.
There you go.
Who, who called it, somebody called it out, I heard it.
Yeah, we heard it.
It was me.
So block bet after turn goes check, check, you're looking at second pair, you block the straight, you unblock the. You block that a little bit. Oh my goodness.
Oh.
I think he. I think he like the ace, can we get him to fold?
So you block the straight with the king, and you unblock his bluffs the space.
Is, is this ever a call fee?
Yeah, oh, you unblock, like, you block the straight and you unblock spades.
Look at the sizing fee, there's no way in hell I'm calling here.
It's a nice thought, though.
Alright. Don't be a nit.
I think we have some strong hands.
I wear that badge proudly.
So first treat, we like to keep the fish on the lines, that's what I.
Oh dude, you, you, he can't continue with anything, you just gotta call here, like, you, you got the board so, 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 so locked up.
This is what you might do to click. He's gonna continue pretty wide here still. Happy days.
We raised twenty percent here.
Hmm, yep.
Nines, because we have nines that wants to raise. And then ace.
So, when you, here, here's a question, Louis, when you raise, when you raise, and we have pocket nines here, what kind of range continues? That's not nine X.
Well, look at this, it's just a sliver for pocket nine, I personally, I would probably just, uh. But you know, it's mostly C betting, right?
Well, it's just a three bet C bet kind of thing coming through.
How often does button betting here?
It's mostly, it's the most betting the flop, but if I find some check, I'm gonna, like, top set, always. Always a check calling, and then middle set is mixing, bottom set is always raising, right?
Well, specifically on this texture too, I mean, it's a nine-three deuce rainbow.
Yeah, I wanna keep them, right, but we could raise sometimes if you want to, it's more like this. So, we check. If he bets, say, okay, now we know that we need to bomb, right, twenty-nine or twenty is gonna be probably.
You gotta go really big here, I wouldn't be surprised to see like.
But hang on, my question before that, say he drops a big dollar bet here, like a twenty-five. Okay?
Yeah, you just.
Back on us, we just, uh, stop it.
Just, yeah, just jam.
I would call here.
Okay, so it's not like this, the last, okay.
This one's kinda.
We're so locked up with top, with top value. He's drawing the two outs or less, a lot.
Hey. Say, what did he go for on the turn, he went with a check, right?
Check, back in.
So when he goes check, check, how do we end all this room?
He goes super bowlers, what I think.
Twenty-nine.
I wouldn't even be surprised to see like, I was gonna say all in, but that's out of line.
Oh, what size would, what size would your bluff be?
Big.
Twenty-nine, but it's mostly.
I mean, there's three bluffs in both ranges, like, there will be, but.
Oh my goodness, the champion is in the house.
Oh, yeah. Because I'm traveling.
Oh my.
So, so, yeah, that's cool.
And, hey, you, you, you look like you're traveling by foot somewhere.
We are traveling away, out of, out of this country, let's get out of here.
Alright.
Right now, I'm traveling to lunch, and I'm studying.
Happy days, so we check this board, do we need to call?
No.
Uh, I would, I would.
The other three backdoors we call, not this one?
See, man, I would be tempted to call here, but, I don't know, maybe it's bad.
Ah.
I, I would definitely be tempted to call here, just because we interact with the, the queen and the nine so well too.
Yeah.
A raise, a raise, or just, uh, call?
I would imagine you can probably add a raise into the strategy at some point.
Alright, some sliver.
The jack of, uh, the jack of spades is a pretty attractive card to, uh, maybe, uh, do some shenanigans with.
Yeah, thirty percent of the time, you can raise, either the ace or the jack.
Yeah, I was just thinking it's mostly cool, cause it's ace high.
Otherwise, say we just call.
I was surprised. Direct equity to improve your hand on the turn.
What now, we, we give up?
Old, I think you do.
That's it, right? Alright.
We gave it, we gave it a good shot, you know?
Yeah, we tried.
Throw it in the fucking mug.
Oh.
It's it.
Alright. I would just call. Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
They have like ace five spades to raise.
Yeah, 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 that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the higher, the higher ace flush draws, you should just call.
Why do you think that is?
So with the ace and the queen, we block his lower flushes.
I don't, really, really has the threes and twos in their range, in a three bed pot.
You have more outs too.
No, there, he has no connectivity with the board except for a jack.
Also, we got bad showdown as well.
Yeah, with two overs and the flush draw, if we check raise and he comes over the top, we're okay to just get it all in.
Once he has initiative, we don't really bet into him. Like here, the ace come pretty, pretty, pretty great card.
He just, uh, he played check.
Check show.
We check because he has.
Five years ago, I, five years ago, I would've went nuts on that card.
Okay, so.
Ooh, in.
I don't hate all in, I actually like it, but. Yeah, it kinda feels, feels that way, right, but.
Yeah. Just, it's.
Feels that way.
I just wanna make sure I get all the chips in, I mean, he has something.
You gotta play check, I don't think, well, you might donk, you might donk here.
You might don't jam, huh?
Maybe.
It looks so bad if you don't.
We want him to bluff the hearts though, if he's gonna do it.
I don't think we don't, but who knows, I mean, getting every street wrong doing this.
He is gonna shut down with all his aces though, and his jacks here.
For the same reason it wasn't a check raise, it could be a dunk. He just doesn't have.
He disciplined and checked.
That's right.
That's.
Why I just put it on the turn.
Yeah. Oh, we're so lucky, Phil, this is how it feels to be.
I'm slow rolling.
You check and the opponent doesn't.
He has five, six of spades.
He is king ten of spades here sometimes.
Okay, well, he just, we cooled him.
We, we were ahead the whole way.
Ice, ice baby. Here's a low, low frequency check raise.
See, I.
I like.
I kinda, I, I don't wanna bluff the, I don't wanna bluff the ace, I would be more inclined to call here.
How often do we check this board, first off?
It's a paired board, we're gonna check it.
I've never checked here, I think we bet like range, no?
No, the queen.
He's got a lot more queens than us, surely.
Out of position, we don't see that paired boards as much as we do in position. I think there might be thirty percent checking on this board.
I think that's what I thought, we're mostly bad. And then range is gonna be like ten percent bet, fifteen percent check.
No, I think it's probably like thirty percent check.
Ten percent. So, but it's a board when you're just range bet, that's what I thought.
Pretty much.
Okay, so we're in the slivers here, so whatever.
Come on, Louis, coming from someone who three bets in the slivers, you can't just dismiss the slivers. You can't be like, you can't be like, oh, whatever, it's in the slivers.
But we got into slivers passively, and he hates that.
Yeah, passive slivers are worthless. Oh, there we go, we got a good turn, check, bet foul, okay, he has the initiative.
We have, wait, we might have some leads here, I'm.
I don't think so, cause he's.
Why would you, why would you lead here?
He has the initiative, whenever he has it, we don't leave him.
We're playing defense, he's playing offense.
Yeah, the nature of the, the rainbow turn is gonna allow him to try and bet again to push out our stuff that didn't turn flush draw equity. So he's gonna continue a lot here.
Okay, now, now, now.
Now we need to go fifty-five.
Yeah, so this is, this is an interesting spot for me, because I am tempted just to play call here, I don't know if it's right.
We don't need protection.
We need. I'm usually a call here.
Against what?
The board texture changing.
Okay, so like. It's the same thing of like having a straight on a mona, on a, uh, a monotone board. Like, you don't just always raise your straights on monotone boards, like, he could easily have a full house here.
Right.
The thing is, we block the combos which will have trips as well, ace queen and queen ten, which we're ahead of.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that means we wanna cool more, cause when we raise, he's gonna have, need more lean to queen jack and king queen.
I could see a raise here, I'm just saying, like, in game, this situation, I play call a lot.
Same here, I'm, I'm a big call here in game.
And like, it's an easy check bluff catch for me here, is how I play this.
Yep.
And I'm just never folding.
Cool.
Oh.
Um, I do call here.
I don't think we check often here, two broadways like this.
Closer than it looks.
This combo is gonna wanna check, out of all, all, all the things that do check.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one of the ones that has the easiest continue, cause it blocks both the spade and the heart, so this is gonna be. If I'm calling with pocket nines, this is the combo of pocket nines I wanna call with.
Yeah.
So we continue on spade or hearts on the turn.
Or a nine.
Or a nine, or a nine.
Yeah, we, we just blocked, we blocked his value the most here.
I, I wanna play check raise here.
Clickity clicky.
Uh, yeah, probably.
What if he has king ten?
Yeah, I'm.
Well, we have outs, we have, we have equity.
We have outs if he, he has king ten.
Yeah, we're not afraid of his king ten.
He's gonna have like, he's gonna have ace queen, queen jack, queen ten, he's gonna have stuff like that way more than he's gonna have, just.
What about keeping the fish on the line?
Yeah, that's why I call.
He double barreled, so he probably has something of strength.
Yeah, that's kinda where I'm at, like, if he's double barreling when the nine comes, he, he's gonna have continues versus a raise.
Oh, look at this.
Yeah, it just, it just piles, but.
Yeah, come on.
Uh, you could click it, I mean, it's whatever.
He's gonna, he's gonna have some combo draws that have the ten of spades in here that are gonna continue very easily.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's kinda how I see that too.
Right, especially when he bets the turn there.
He just had complete bubble range.
I think this is just check fold.
You know, if, if there was a diamond, like, if that was a six of diamonds, this could maybe be a good bluff raise.
Oh, yeah, but it.
Yeah, for sure.
Being diamonds on that with those suits, it's.
It's a little different, it being a three bet pot though, I don't think you just get to go absolutely bananas.
No race.
Oh, the hearts are raising, yeah, that's what he was saying, if the six was a diamond, he'd be raising.
Right, yeah, so, so a little bit.
Uh, this is too dangerous, I'm gonna fold.
Yes, too borderline for me.
Okay, see, I was tempted to call, hey, sorry.
You got dirty equity, like, if a seven comes, you could just be, you know.
One of the sevens is eight, and the other three are bad.
I am going to call here.
Yeah, it's an easy call here.
No, this one raised a bit too.
Thirty percent. Percent.
Man, I feel like we checked it up.
Check.
Check, yeah, check and win sometimes, I guess.
Check and win most of the time.
Oh.
Not that time.
So much disrespect, ace four suited against our ace king.
He was waiting.
Louis can't, he can't help it.
Can't, can't take it.
He's, he's heavy breathing, can you, I can hear him.
If it would have been, he was folding his four by the river, I promise you.
I would fold.
How do you not full bet against us, wait, this?
He's gonna be folding that four, you're gonna be rebuying one of the two, right? Okay, um.
No, there's no way.
Uh, I don't know, I, I'm stretching here.
Okay.
I don't think you can do it by calling, I'll put it that way, if you were gonna, if you were gonna do something, I think it'd be a raise, but it, it, it's stretching kinda thin.
What do you need, like, spades?
Yeah, any other.
Yeah, you. Yeah, you would prefer.
And even the other three combos, you you can find some shenanigans, but.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, well, yeah, yeah, it it's a stretch, to say the least.
Okay, it might be a stretch.
With, uh, without the backdoor.
Man.
Um. See, this is another one of those situations.
Oh.
Yeah, you gotta get, you gotta get out of here.
No, I don't think we check very often here.
You don't, I don't think you do either.
Okay, there's still a sliver. Big sliver.
The slivers count.
I think, I would call this, I don't think we can fold this.
It's like your best stand, that third, your top pair, so you're.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the ace pair, you you don't fold too many kings.
Yeah, I guess we have outs against these two pairs.
I'm definitely over folding these spots, but see, I don't, I don't end up in this node is my problem. Like ace, ace four, I just, I always bet this.
Yeah.
I think we bluff here.
Why would you bluff? You, you're ahead of all of his, uh.
We block.
You're ahead of everything that you beat.
Well, we're gonna have, we, we're gonna have hands like queen nine, queen ten, queen jack that are lower than this that we probably wanna pull blocks from.
Yeah, it's your best unparalleled hand.
Yeah, we have showdown value.
You gotta call, I think.
It's just a cold call.
Uh, folding versus some heat if they, uh, if they get a little excited here.
Okay. Yeah, no set on the turn this time.
Okay.
Check, uh, check jam.
Check again.
Check jam, I.
I don't think we can, oh.
Okay, giving me anxiety, my man.
We did it. We did it.
Yeah, you have the properties you want, you block the straight and you have the space.
Look at the size.
We got him.
Bluff him off a nothing burger, man.
Supposed to call the free bet with five free.
God, I'm not. Stupid box.
Uh, check.
When, when they're this deep, the button's gonna be calling most of his suited stuff, airproof, you bet.
Wanna check raise here?
Yep.
Especially the low connected, it's fine, like.
Yeah, he has lots of tenuous here, this is good for his continue range, barrel, twenty-five, yep. And stuff the turkey.
Oh, it wanted to go smaller to set up a better SPR for the river.
Yeah, he was checking a lot as well. Probably to check jab, which because of the SPR.
Now.
Checking.
Lemon's just getting cute.
So it was checking. Interesting, we got a call here.
I'll call.
Yeah.
Wait, it was checking the end?
But over calls get there a lot.
Oh. What does that bet mean? We haven't seen that yet.
Hmm, Jack ten could be doing the seven, eight could be, or, you know, like, six, seven could be doing it. I think you raise still, though, it's like.
Mucho, no.
Primarily call.
Primarily.
Thirty-seven. Or call.
I was on a call, yeah.
Yeah, every other time they bet at least half pot. When they bet.
Right, that was why I was called, because the bet size was so weird.
Oh, dude, we're smoked.
Yeah, right, we check and then.
Hope they check it back. Yeah.
Yeah.
Jack nine, huh? Okay.
Yeah.